One day.
Well.
I'm sorry.
So.
I said.
You know.
I'm.
I had.
Oh.
I remember.
I had.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm.
Okay.
I know, I had.
Oh.
I remember.
I had.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Look.
I'm sorry.
I've.
I've seen.
I'm.
I'm.
Crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, I've been there before.
I'm like.
I'm amazed.
I brought.
I keep.
How you doing?
I see.
But I know.
I'm.
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 I know.
But I have a partner.
So.
I'm.
I'm.
We.
We.
I think that's wrong.
Do you?
When we do, let's get around to it.
Well, yeah.
What?
Oh, great.
It's.
You guys.
I told you.
It's a lot.
Right.
You're the first.
But I.
I hope we hear a lot.
We're talking about with Brian.
You start.
I mean, that's better off than what we're.
Right, Senator.
That's right.
I'm not doing.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm.
That.
The, uh.
Come on, let's go.
Again.
Well, I'm gonna say something about what I hold.
Yeah, they got this right out.
Yeah.
That's all.
To it.
No.
To what we did, what you did.
Well, when I heard the talking, you've had a couple of.
You have.
You're telling us that you.
Well, it's.
I think.
It's.
Yeah.
It's.
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 I saw a lot more down here.
Free.
Come.
Come out and then.
Yeah.
Hey.
I'm making you.
Back.
Yeah.
It goes like that.
I'm at the church too, so don't feel bad.
But you don't that.
Comes out.
Walk down the.
I'm.
Just keeps on walking.
He's creepy, you know, oh.
He's pretty.
So.
It's.
Sure.
It's.
So he don't want to sit on the front.
So they're.
Check this.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
Look.
I know.
I know.
My shit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That's.
I think.
That's.
That can't.
Yeah, it's roaming my.
Just on the six.
There's.
Yeah, I walked it back.
Really.
Really.
Say.
It's.
It's.
Yeah.
If they will back.
Back up.
I already made three mistakes.
I was like, hey.
What was it seventy?
I was.
I was.
What's else?
Now.
I rang everybody.
Right.
And you.
I'm.
Yeah.
I know.
That's.
That's.
But.
And.
That's.
On.
It's.
It.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
So, man, if you're.
Friend is.
We'll.
But.
They would need it.
Sleep.
Some.
They.
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 They're.
Right.
But it had.
They.
You.
How do you?
That's.
You know what?
I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I said, I haven't seen you talk to me.
I don't tell you no.
I'm gonna go ahead and mine.
I'm.
I'm.
You're.
Too much.
Long.
Don't you, uh?
When we had that meeting.
That.
Third street.
You're.
Sure.
Sure.
I'm.
Little.
I'm.
I'm.
Just.
Yeah.
I got.
But.
I'm.
I'm.
You shut light up too.
I'm.
What?
He did.
From my.
No, I'm not one of them.
Oh.
Oh.
I.
Are you putting on the spot?
I'm.
I'm Christian this guy's in the business.
He does it.
Hi.
Good.
I mean.
I know.
I'm.
Good.
Saturday.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
You're.
Sure.
When we're.
Can't.
For the.
Place.
So.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh.
Oh, what did you?
I guess you need to.
You.
Play some more.
I.
I.
I'm.
Just.
Oh.
You could.
You.
Yeah.
It all leaves it.
I'm.
I'm.
I'm changing.
You know.
Well.
I.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Are you gonna?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
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 Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
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 Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
I'm.
Uh.
Not.
What you done.
I.
We got.
Three.
Yeah.
You get a rock.
Play.
That's.
Four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Guess what you got?
Like, I don't know.
Yeah.
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 We know.
We aim to please.
Yeah.
My home.
Yeah.
So now I'm gonna.
Over you.
Look.
There.
What?
She's.
She's.
Tell.
Was that all good?
She's.
Yeah.
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 We.
You know.
She's.
Start.
She loses her purse.
Or the change.
Second.
So.
Yeah.
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 This.
Girl.
Oh.
This.
She's.
Hello.
I'm just saying.
Hello, Louis.
Well.
You know.
Yes.
So.
I'm.
Yeah.
We'll be talking.
I.
I'm sure.
We're.
States.
One.
Next.
State.
Yeah.
But.
I mean.
So.
Certain.
Black.
Oh.
Yeah.
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 Two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want.
So.
I'm.
I'm.
What was?
Yeah.
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 I'm.
Probably done there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
But.
The.
She.
She.
Yeah.
Down.
Or.
I don't.
Now.
Probably.
Probably.
Don't.
Hey.
You.
You're gonna show up.
You're gonna.
Definitely.
Don't.
Show up.
Maybe.
Somewhere else.
Same.
Don't.
Wait.
Um.
Stay here.
I'm.
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 Yeah.
Okay.
We.
I don't remember.
We.
I didn't.
It's.
She.
She already had.
Yeah.
She.
She.
Like.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
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 I'm.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah.
Fresh.
Obviously.
Fresh.
Happy.
Then.
Oh.
I say freshman.
She's not a good freshman.
I love.
First year.
Yeah.
First year students.
Yeah.
She's.
Seventy.
Four.
So.
Yeah.
I know.
People.
We.
Okay.
Exactly.
They're shot.
They're.
They're.
Don't.
They're.
They're.
Back.
Back.
You.
It's.
No.
How?
It is.
You.
You don't mind.
Okay.
Exactly.
They're shot.
They're.
They're.
Don't.
They're.
They're.
It's.
Back.
Back.
You.
It's.
No.
It is.
You.
You don't mind.
I'm.
Yeah.
Six thirty.
Mm-hmm.
Six thirty. Um. Will we start making plays with it? Invitation from. Commissioner. Page.
You know, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. Thank you for giving us the health and ability to come together to discuss town issues. Uh, please bring us wisdom as we go about town's business that we will make decisions that are in the best interest of town. And once again, just thank you for all your many blessings, Lord, in Christ Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Thank you.
Uh, glad to be ladies.
I'm. Glad to be ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We shall have this. Good. That's the honor of the recitation of the town's law city mission statement, please.
I will, to advance a framework for our success, the balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Price, if you will, the honor of the recitation of the town's law city mission statement.
Yes, ma'am, be glad to. Solid City is a safe, prosperous, vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Thank you. Uh, Rowley, uh, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, yes, ma'am. We have two adjustments. The first one is we should have had listed, uh, public comment after the consent agenda, uh, prior to the public hearing. So we are going to add that, but I don't think we had anyone sign up for it, Jennifer.
No, not at all. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just will. But we'll need to add that to the agenda. Second is we are going to remove the closed session at the end.
I'll remove it.
That's all. That's all.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
Seven. All in favor?
Aye.
In your touch?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
In your touch? All right, double tiered. Yeah.
Yeah.
Still.
Here.
Yes.
I'm.
So.
We.
We're gonna add in the public here. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Tim, open the hearing.
Yes.
Um, so in Schedule D of your package, this is an item that, uh, started with a discussion with me of a downtown developer. It took the item to the planning board, had a special planning board, and the planning board initiated this amendment. Um, purpose of the amendment is just purely simple. There is on page, um, twenty-four of your package. Twenty-four, forty-five. It's, it's related to the parking requirements for multifamily downtown developments.
What? What?
The parking requirements for multifamily downtown developments. Okay? Uh, currently, it's one parking space each. Of bedroom. This is how it's listed in the, the current ordinance. And for the most part, we've been working with, uh, units downtown that are, uh, only one bedroom units. So the ordinance, uh, has been relatively, uh, welcomed by the developer. We've got a new developer that wants to, uh, provide multiple bedroom units. Um, the, the units that, that we're talking about specifically is right beside the farmer's allowance. It's upstairs of, uh, the Sir, Rupert Johnson survey in the building. There's, uh, gonna be four units placed up there. They've got a contract with the owner of the farmer's allowance to have six parking spaces. And this, uh, new standard is one parking space for, uh, each or for one bedroom units. And one in twenty-five hundreds, one point two five, parking spaces for two or more bedroom units, rounded up to the next whole number. We did some research, looked at some area towns, uh, what we did find out, and it was just information, there's a lot of communities had, had a lot of downtown parking, they just don't require parking. Period, with its residential portion. And, and I, I would note that they do have substantial parking facilities in their downtown. Uh, the downtowns have not had that. Uh, we've seen this one point two five parking spaces as the standard. I think that's, you'll see that in the package script. And then, uh, number eleven, we're tracking it out. It, it, these are unnecessary requirements in our ordinance. These are things that you have to do, but we'd slowly try to pull out. Out of our zone of what is things that are not really the zone that relate to it. Or, or are in clear in some of the second. Um, in the package, I've attached that application. I mentioned to you about, uh, one twenty-six, one twenty, it's actually one twenty-eight South Town Avenue. Or upstairs, there's some plans there. We have, uh, existing ordinance for multifamily, which this standard is still a little more, uh, flexible, a little more giving than our existing multifamily ordinance. But I feel like the standards downtown can be a little more aggressive. Um, this is gonna town look at Sanford Hudson, say, um, you play the lane. Ice cream. It's. Reverend Tim, that's all I have is a worksheet.
Okay.
Page thirty-nine. As we're considering what you, uh, close up here.
So I had.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I had to do, the question that I had was regarding the, um, the I ten V. So one point two five parking spaces for two or more bedrooms. So it's rounded up to the next whole number. So basically, what you're saying is for, if you have a two-bedroom apartment, it's two, two parking spaces. If it's a three-bedroom, you still get two parking spaces.
Um, so for one two-bedroom apartment, you need one point two five.
Correct, but it says rounded up to the next whole number. So that's two.
Right. So for four, you would say four times one point two five.
Would you be five? So five parking spaces, okay, but that, that's not what this says. It says one point two five for two or more bedroom units. It doesn't say per. So I think you need.
And.
We need to change that, yeah. One point two five for two bedroom units or, yeah, or something along those lines. Yeah, um. Yeah.
But, but if you had a three or four bedroom, you would still be two, right?
No, that's not what he's saying. He's, it's one point two five per bedroom.
No, no, it's, it's per two or more.
Two or, okay, so what, okay, so what you just said, if it's a four-bedroom.
I mean, excuse me, I meant to say four units with two bedrooms would be five parking spaces.
How? Four units, you round up, that's eight, right?
That's, uh.
You gotta round up.
One, one unit with two bedrooms is one point two five.
But it says. Round it to the next whole number.
But you wanna do the full calculation.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So you would have, this developer has four units with two bedrooms, so it's four times one point two five.
Then you round up.
Then you round it, after you do your math.
That's a, that's a little confusing. You could interpret it as rounding up per unit.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's what's kind of the way it's working out.
Or they're gonna park behind, like.
Yeah, they were parking the.
Long.
Long. Um.
So that's plain.
Let's take a look at the existing ordinance. Just, we used to, uh, look on page thirty-six.
Because. It, the way I would, yeah, I'm reading it as you ran it up per, per unit, not per development.
Mm-hmm.
Because you, you're talking about rounding up after you do the math for the whole development.
Right. And that's how we, we would do all developments. We're gonna look at the development as a whole. We won't, we won't require parking per bedroom. It's, it's, it's parking per.
The development.
We, we, we could throw that, the word development in there.
That's, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, would I have to have one that parking per unit so we know that there are. Thank you.
That, that's actually in another C. It talks about sign, designated restricted park, restricted park.
Sure.
So, um, that's more, more of the details than anything.
Okay.
It's ten.
That's. I mean, that's not. Big deal. Just make sure that people stop paying the parking prices.
Yeah.
Okay. We might be happy.
I, I got a question, Chris. You okay with water lunch, Chris?
Say it again.
You all right with water lunch?
Yes. Yeah. We're. Okay.
Please. Jack, I have another question. When you look into the future, um, say we get a bigger development, more under the town areas above businesses, and they're doing. We'll put bedroom, whatever the future may hold. Uh. Would it be impossible to allow the language to be a little bit more flexible so we don't have to re-modify at the next? At the, if, if, if there's a next one to say minimum of one point two five? Um, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know what the future's gonna hold, but there could be a.
Could.
It could be one.
Uh. Oh, Lena, women, uh, Lena, but we don't want the language to be flexible or stacked in a term. You want it to be fairly defined.
Okay.
The, I know the courts support that.
Thinking about like, you know, if you have a gate, you have a car that you're in it now. They thought about that for their rest.
Lisa's the new Lisa Pedali, the owner of the Barnes &amp; Noble property, talking about. I hadn't heard talk about that, did she?
Well, that may be something that she wants to think about. I mean, we can't, she does that. But that would reassure the people that have a space there that can go in and out without having to worry that other people take one in and.
Yeah, I'd be glad to share that idea with you.
I mean, we, let's just.
Yeah, oh, you don't listen to some of this highlight of this. When those things get developed, you have people. Where are they going? Where's the trash man gonna pick up? Who's it gonna be? Well, now we're already having a problem with the dumpster in the back there. What's, sort of what's the idea of that?
Yeah, they gotta provide, they gotta have trash service. All that's worked out with either through the town's trash collection system, the carts, or each developer responsible for their own garbage. You know, most of the apartment projects, apartment complexes, they handle their own garbage. I'm not sure what they've been worked out with tenants down town. Chris, why can't answer that better than you can?
We've talked about with the developers, but we'll have it solid. Because we're still.
Yeah, and what I was thinking about, or maybe thinking of it was just, I don't think you do this now. But if we put the little carts like we have, you know, how the, that street's not. A little alleyway, there's not lot enough for that truck to get down there and do anything.
That's the whole reason we'll put back there.
Yeah. Okay, we all on this, right?
We're. That's another growing thing issue.
Yeah, that's a good problem, have a growing thing.
That's what's.
Yeah, but, you know, we don't want the carts out there on the front side. You can dip it all there. One of them little noise things. Let's say it's a growing thing. Y'all on?
All right, anybody else before we look at the board sheet?
And I will save it first. Jennifer made a problem, a amendment to the floor. This is my first chance at using our new software or program with the media code to show you the ordinance. So the way these are going to be presented will be redlined. The ordinances that you see there, as you see Max, it started with the ordinance. It's the reset up, the adopted, and it won't be a clean ordinance in the future to be a redlined copy of C.
I like the red one.
I do too, I do too. I think General City does the same thing with their statute, so I like the red one.
So I guess the last question is, what's the final wording we're gonna use?
I'll read it again, I'll read it again, so I'm assisted with the board as well. 10B, 1 and 2500, that's 1.25 parking spaces for two or more veteran units. Parentheses rounded up to the next phone number for the developer. Parentheses, period. Yeah. Sorry for that confusion. I do it so much, I've looked at the, of the slide, so I appreciate your sharing of it.
Yeah, oh, and then, is there a secondary means degrids that possible? I couldn't, this is so small, I couldn't let that.
Don't think there is. There's windows on the rear area.
Yeah, we're gonna jump back, if you can, you know, probably you can jump back to where you're down for the.
Trying to think of, you know, Billy Judson. And I believe the building inspector, we had a pre-work meeting with this developer. And I think they were both there.
And it's gonna have to travel on travel distance too. How far they gotta come out and get to the stairwell to go down. It is gonna be fully sprinkled, so that's narrow it down even more.
Okay.
And the stairways in the middle, right, just in the middle. And the units are gonna be two up front, two in the back, so. The center point is where they're entering.
Yeah, and they're supposed to be sprinkled. We're working on them right now, where to put if you get DC, where we can get to it quickly.
But it's not, Billy couldn't have to be too mean to degrids.
I, when you sprinkle it, I think it throws a lot of that travel distance out.
All right.
Once it's sprinkled. But Billy and the building inspector, like I said, they're on top of it.
Yeah, and I think if this ordinance approved, their contractor may get a building permit more. So if building plans have been approved, that'll lead to a spread.
I'll make a motion to the board commissioners to adopt the amendment, approve the amendment, approve the action is consistent with the adopted land development plan. Now, I'll make a motion to the board commissioners to adopt the amendment, approve the action is consistent with the adopted land development plan. Because the land development plan recommends amending ordinances as needed to accommodate uses or situations arise. They're not clearly covered by existing ordinances. And approve the proposed amendment is reasonable because it modifies the development ordinances to be more user friendly where possible.
Second.
Mayor Portem, board, you have before you tonight's schedule E, which is inclusive of a budget amendment 2022.4, as well as a letter of recommendation to award the contract for the repair of the Fifth Street Road and Culvers. As we had indicated, we'll try to get this back to the board as quickly as possible. So therefore, today, the bids were open. And if you look on page, on the third page, you'll have the bid tabulation for the two that came here. And as you can see, SKC came in at $149,960. These were all based upon an expedited construction as we had asked to be completed in 45 days from the actual signing of the contract. So you have all of this information in front of you, as well as on page 40. That was an explanation for the procedures tonight, but there are two actions that need to be taken. Now, we do have David Honeycutt with us tonight, the engineer, he is virtually with us. So if the board has any questions about moving forward, he's here to answer those as well as. I would like for you to look at the budget amendment that we have here. As you can see, Tina prepared one that is reducing the actual fiscal recovery projects line for the ARP funding that we received. And this is based upon breaking out for more accountability each one of the line items. Tina and I had evaluated the guidelines and realized that this would be covered under stormwater since it relates to culverts and the moving of water and passing. So we won't have to use the, at this point, the power grid funds. Yes, sir, that's great. So what this, again, budget amendment does, it outlines what was approved previously by the board for the initial ARP funds, as well as adds the repairs to Fifth Street too.
So the total appropriation, instead of being 1.3 million, is 885. Am I reading that correct?
That, that will be the balance, this left. Now, the appropriation, these two are only expenditures. Normally, you'll have a revenue at the top, expenditure at the bottom. What Tina is doing is reallocating to individual account numbers. If you'll notice, the first one is 92,542,000,000. She has broken out each individual line item at the bottom in order to be able to account when, at such point, we are audited for the expenditures from the ARP fund.
All right, so I'm now just even more confused. How much money are we taking out of savings and spending on projects?
None out of savings.
So where is my account from?
The ARP funding.
Okay.
Yes, we, Tina and I evaluated the guidelines for this, and it fits within the stormwater infrastructure.
So that's the money that we got?
Yes, sir, 1.3100.
And so I guess where I'm getting confused is, first one says, grant project fund expansion will be decreased by following amounts. I see a decrease that matches the figure in section three. And I guess that's how I'm reading a net amendment appropriation of 885.
Well, what it is, is, so, when the previous budget amendment that we did, we set up fiscal recovery funds as one expense line. And that was for the 1.3 million. So what we're doing is we're taking the 425,000 out of that one line item and then moving it down for each of the items that was approved last week. And then, so you're gonna see the decrease of 425,000 nets out to the increase in section three of 425,000.
But it's still, it's still, the total amount is still the same, we're just moving around. It's still 1.3.
And we're just spending it, yeah.
And we're just giving credit in different areas.
Right, yeah, because it looks like from what the guidance that we're getting is, we're gonna have to start reporting. I think our first report's gonna be due October 30th. And it looks like they're gonna ask questions and the way it's gonna be reported, it's just gonna be easier for SAG to keep up if every time we spend money, we appropriate or allocate it to each one of those expense lines.
So as more money is appropriated through the process, she'll be bringing back additional budget amendments that will account for how the money is spent.
Every time we have a new one that gets approved, I'll just add another one.
So there's 156,000, we're looking at Fifth Street coming out of the 885.
It's come out of that, out of the 1.3. The 885 is what's left after we spend the 425.
Right, right, but that's what we're, the repaired street is coming out of the 884, we're not late.
It's included, it's in the, it's a first item in that 425.
Oh, yeah, oh, well, I was like, oh, yeah, sorry. Tony already said it, you need to give him that. Yeah, I didn't see that. Yeah, late.
Are there any more questions before we get to the page? Let's get it even.
No, I'm looking at you now, you got.
I was gonna say, what I was gonna request is, at the bottom, those two should have been reversed on page 40. Because before we approved the budget amendment itself, the actual award of the construction bids should be approved for SKC. So, yes, if you'll, if whoever makes a motion when the board decides to move forward, number two should be first.
I'll make a motion to award the construction bid to SKC Inc. and authorize town manager to execute contracts.
I'll make a motion that we approve the 2022.4 budget amendment.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, let's go to the new business. I think we're up about 400 purposes, is that right?
Yes, ma'am, it is. So tonight, we have Chief Murphy with us. And he is here to discuss and inform the board of the new ISO ratings for the town of Silver City and the Chatham Central Fire District. And we certainly want to congratulate the chief on the efforts that he and the staff made in having these rates reduced. So I'll let him do the presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to explain what has happened. Because we have had a lot of change in board members since we've done it in 2012. 2012 was the first time we had been re-rated since 1992. And in 92, we went from an eight in town to a nine in the district, and we dropped to a double five in that point. Then in 2012, when we got re-rated, we dropped to a four in the city and remained a five in our fire district. So this time, we got notified that this year we're gonna be tested again. On June the 28th, he'd come into town, and we did our fire scene setup with our firemen, which we would do. Whether we're municipality or not, we'll use drop tanks. We had to do that a certain amount of time. We've got five minutes, then set that tank up, dump water out of two tankers with two tanks, and we've done it a little over two minutes. They give us five minutes for the first one, then an additional 10 minutes for the second tank. So we did everything, the guys did everything, in just a little over two minutes. And we didn't get extra credit for doing it any faster. But he did give us good credit on a new low-level strainer that we found by found a ball. Where what he does is measure what's left in the tank. And this low-level strainer got it down to about a, about three quarters of an inch left. So he gave us a bunch of credit for available water usage that we didn't get last time. A lot of the notable changes for this time to go from a three or a four was what you guys had done for us two years ago, and actually six years ago, between the career chief and the career staffs being hired, our personnel ratio, which is, looks at available firemen that are on duty at any given time. Our personnel rating of Mitch back in 2012 was 0.24. So he was almost a quarter of a percent of a volunteer fireman. With the career staff and my position coming on board, we went to a 2.6. Where, so each paid staff is equal to two and a half volunteers. The way they look at it is, the paid staff is on duty 24 hours a day, plus me. And the volunteers just hit miss, so we're actually worth two people. If we look into the future and we wanna keep doing better, if we add one more personnel to the 24-hour staff and a deputy chief, that'll jump up to 3.5 personnel per call or per time, so it would be one paid person for three and a half. Our training hours last year was over 4,615 and a half hours. Ordinarily, we're around 2,500 and 3,000. So we jumped up with the paid staff being there, because we can count truck checks that they do every day towards driver training. We had driver operator classes that they had to go to Sanford for, so we had new driver training, we maxed out. We maxed out the funk training they got. So we had a bunch more training that with the paid staff every one day, doing something, we could count a lot more than it just. Used to be, we only had with our volunteers, one Monday night a week for three hours. So you had basically 12 hours a month. Now with the paid staff, we can do a lot more with guys. There are volunteers that are on shift that wanna come in and do stuff every one day that they may not be able to do at night. So we bumped that up a lot. Again, with the board's help, our fire flow capacity, pumping capacity went up with the addition of the 2019 engine, from 4,500 gallons a minute to 5,500 gallons a minute. So now we're rocking with two 2,000 gallon pumpers first out, and of course, we got our reserve. But we can still add that into our fire flow, as much water as we can keep going. Our water supply, Chris and his guys have been tremendous witnesses this year on finding hydrants that were messed up and getting them fixed quick and fast. I think we still have one we're fighting with right now in Brooklyn, but we're working on it. The Golden Leaf line that was given for the campsite with, working with Brian and David to get that online, where we could use it, helped out tremendously on that end of my district where we only had two or three ponds. Now we've got sustained water system that we're getting 1,500 gallons of minimum water out of it. So that helped out tremendously. We added two big ponds, one down on Landers Chapel Road and one up north. That helps out with our tanker shovels. They ideally wanted tanker shovels no more than three and a half miles one way. So we've done good with that. Our water pressures have improved. Back in 2012, we lost both our chicken plants, so the water plant wasn't manned 24 hours a day like it is now. It's mounted here, running 24 hours a day, production's up, gives us more pressure. We seen a change at Loves Creek Church Road go from 6, 700 gallons a minute, almost 1,100 gallons a minute out there, coming off that main line. So that's helped out tremendously. He picked our buildings, he picked 21 buildings for fire flows in the town, both residential and commercial. And what he does is he looked at the higher pressures and what we could do with those in Little Formans. Pre-plans, that's where we go to every business and harass them for contact numbers and all. 2012, we were looking at 90, 95%. I think we're still there, I think we're a little bit higher. But out of the 21 buildings he asked for, we were able to produce a paper copy pre-plan for him. So he gave us 100% on pre-plans, which helped out. And the paid staff, the shift guys have done great going out this past year, going out to get in the business. Because, you know as well as I do, a lot of our businesses change overnight, especially these little stores that it's hard to control sometimes. So they've done good. As we look, right now, we're gonna look at five years down the road. The way Ted Inspector told me the other week is, they're gonna look to do inspections every five years. We have over 1,800 departments in the state that feel like they can start going every five years to look better, to do a little bit better. As I said at the beginning there, with the career staff, looking at one more person on shift, and the deputy chief will help out. Resource, resource deployment, which is where our fire stations are and where equipment states. Right now, within the city limits, we got a 7.84 out of 10. Our district, we got 1.46 out of 10. And that is basically, they would like to see, and I don't see what else ever get to this point, but one engine company within a mile and a half, and a truck company, which is a big ladder truck, two and a half miles of every building. For us to do that, we'd have to be Greensboro, Raleigh. That's how Greensboro ends up with Class 1 in Charlottesville. We'll never be that way. But we are looking, not just at campsite, but we do have, our district goes all the way down to Ransmith Road, Levers Chapel Road, all way down out there. And a lot of those people are still in a Class 9. The classification goes from one for the very best to a nine or a 10, which means nothing. So if, as we're looking towards the future, and we're looking for different spots for fuel stations, out that way is gonna be our biggest bank of butt, because I mean, I know we worry about what's in here a lot. But we also, my job is to look at everybody, district and all. And with the rate coming down in town, we'll help residential some, it'll drop some, but it's really gonna help our commercial properties in town. And the same thing in the district. You know, we get calls right now down in the Ransmith Road and, I can't think of the dairy route or. It goes into Randolph County, but they're Class 10, because they're so, there's almost nine and a half miles. So, you know, Roy and I had talked in the spring about different things, looking ahead to the future. If we go out towards Colridge Roadway, you know, around Trips Cottage there, that will only, not only help Ransmith Road that way, but we did, when was it, spring? They asked about travel distance to the campsite entrance, we went from seven minutes from the main station. One truck went up Raleigh, or 64, and I went out Third Street. It was almost seven and a half, eight minutes to the main entrance. If we get around Trips Cottage, we knock it down almost three and a half to four minutes response time. So that'll help whoever may be coming in out there, tighten a little bit more. Training was a big part of it too. We get, every fireman is required 18 hours of what they call facility training. And the closest facility training we have is South Carolina Community College in Sanford or Franklinville. There are two, and to be a training center, you have to have a three-story training tower, a burn building, and at least five acres of land with it. The area that managers, Lynch and I were looking at, that property was like 13 acres, where we could do a training facility and a fire station on safe property, and have enough room to do a driving course, not only for my EVD, but the police chief, where they can do some aggressive driving out there also. And it's just, it's hard. We were able to get a lot of points this year, because guys go on to college for class. But for us to go to CCC, we gotta take four to eight people, two trucks. All the way down there, it's a 45-minute ride, and we're down there for three hours. They need leave at 5:30, get back at 11, but we still gotta worry about who's covering town. So it's hard to split. As far as apparatuses and our equipment, we're doing good on that. You guys have helped us out a lot on that over the years. We could still, if we would decide to do a substation, we still have a tanker and an engine we could move out, still have enough protection in town. I think we have a handout for you that shows a graph. It comes, the top one is ISO services, they do the camp, countrywide, they do everything, 100,000 people or more. The blue one is just what North Carolina rating does. And out of that, there's 1,520 districts in North Carolina right now. We fall with the city Class 3, we're one of 121 departments in the state that have a Class 3. With our district being a four, we're one of 300, excuse me, 84 out of those 1,500 that are a four. So we're down in the lower part of what we're doing. As far as county-wide and what the other districts are, right now, I'm proud to say that both Silver City and Pittsburgh still maintain the lowest two ISO ratings in the county, with a four, three in the city and a four in the district. Pittsburgh was rerated the same day we were, and I got my notification two weeks ago, Harold got this. And they dropped two or three and a four, just like we did. North Chatham, Bonley and Monkeer all dropped from sixes to fours this last time. And Bennett, Silk Oak and Goldston dropped from a six to a five. Now, the range in between, you can look at Bennett and Bonley, they kinda look alike and when you look at things, but they go by different scenarios, so you can't put apples to apples. In the future, we may not be able to maintain the lowest one the way Pittsburgh and North Chatham's grown. You know, they got more stuff coming in faster than we are, and it may be able to grow a little bit more. North Chatham has over, God, almost 60 and full-time employees now. But their district is so spread out that they're getting hit with the distribution and the stations, and trying to figure that out. Pittsburgh luckily is, we run, for being 15 miles apart, we run almost gel to gel. Which, I mean, we have almost, I think, five, six guys now, that my son got hired to volunteer here, but work full-time in Pittsburgh. So we're, our both departments are running pretty close together. So, and that's about it. I mean, with what's been going on and the board's commitment, the town administration's commitment, what you have given us in the past, has brought it down tremendously and will continue to come down. As we move further on and we try moving to different capital projects, I just appreciate your thought in it and considerations that you guys always give us, without kicking and screaming most of the time, kid. It, what you have given us and been able to work with, the dividends are paying off.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I was gonna say, it just tickles me to death. You and all your folks doing this great job, and you do it better than North Chatham, and all that money that they spend over there, and all that equipment they got, and we still better than they are. It tickles me to death. That's great.
I, you know, I steer the ship, the guys do the great, I mean, I can't brag on my guys, I got the best plan. And I know every fire chief will tell you that, but my guys, you know, when I go away, it used to be, I worried about it. And now when I go away, not to be rude, but it's in the back of my mind, back here, because I know who's left behind is gonna step up. And the paid guys have paid dividends the last year and a half, especially on my part. I went from 400, some responses a year, down to just over 200, which I'm happy, my wife's really happy.
And the hard work that you and your faithful have put in is a. And the hard work that you and your faithful have, have put in is a benefit to everybody that's living in the city limits or within the fire district. It's a definite, it may take a little while for them to see it to show up on your homeowner and all that stuff eventually.
That's right.
So that's a positive for everybody that's within the San Francisco.
And I, I believe this will go into effect December the first of this year, these rates will go in. So just be mindful. I did talk to one of the shore agents today who said it does. The big teardrop is from six to five residential, but it still does come down a little while we get residential. So it may only be fifty bucks, but fifty bucks is better than nothing.
Thank goodness you live in my neighborhood.
I don't carry no water here. Any other questions or anything?
Oh, no, no.
That's just information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Roy, your other names for the man here.
All right, so tonight I do have a number of items to bring to the board's attention. First, you had in your agenda packet, it was Schedule G, was a memo with all of the contracts that have been signed since the new fiscal year. And these are all based upon the budget ordinance that was adopted and the guidelines that were within that under A and B. So this is an informational item. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. Second item I wanted to bring to the board's attention is the fact that tonight, as stated previously, Chatham two fifty, the committee was supposed to be back to give an update on the rate for October the twenty-third. However, at this point, after talking with them, they have decided to put this on hold and make a decision on October the fourth and bring it back to let the board know what, what's going to happen. And all of this, of course, is based upon the fact of the increase in the Delta variant and all the cases that are out there, they're trying to use every precaution. And it will probably be some form of an event to close it out, but that is, has yet to, to be decided. But when they do, they'll bring that back to the board. The third item I wanted to mention was, we've had some questions about the immigrant advisory committee and where we are in that process as far as bringing letters of interest back to the board. At this point, we have only received five of those. There, it, it is a seven-member advisory committee. So we have put the word out and are waiting to receive some more interest before we bring those back to the board.
Yes, sir. How many of those files either are in our city limits for you to check?
At this point, I have not seen those. Have you analyzed any of those yet, Jennifer, or?
No, to be honest with you, I just put them in an Excel sheet and I can't remember because I did a couple of weeks ago. But, but yeah, I want to say there were probably two that had Silas City addresses. And I think one of them might have been out at Silk Oak or something, but.
So do, do we just keep advertising until we get seven?
Yes, at this point, we wanted to give it a little more time to see. And again, certainly the fielders are still out there, the word is out there, so we hope to, to receive. The next item I wanted to bring to your attention will be also on the screen. There, there will be a couple of slide shows coming up here. The first one I wanted to make you aware of is the most recent update at the airport terminal. As you know, we've been trying to fund some of these upgrades and improvements to the building that we currently have. And as you can see there, that is a core picture of what the actual facade looks like. It's like coordinated board that was up there for years. And now that has been replaced. This was all in last year's budget and they have just completed that. So it is a, a great improvement from the outside. And as in this year's budget, we have funding for the inside. And those are starting to take place as well. And we will have more pictures of those. But if you get a chance, drive by the airport and, and just look at the outside of the building. It's, it's very noticeable that, that those improvements are being made. The next are the improvements that are going on at City Hall. So Jennifer has a little slideshow here that she went around and had taken some pictures of the different areas and what is going on. And, and certainly they are moving along and have been this last week especially. Of course, this was working nicely around six o'clock. There we go. Yeah, these are some pictures that were in the basement area. That is, that was actually a couple of months ago in the back hallway. Same picture. They're moving forward. Those were some additional pictures from the side view. That area right there is where they now have removed the wall. It looks like they're going to put a wall back in, but that is just strictly to hold up that part until they can put the stationary header when that comes in. So now it is totally open. That is where the new door will be, the new entry coming in to the back from the parking lot. So it now, you can see straight through, if you look on the left and see all the way out of the front of the building. There are two offices that will be on the left. It's actually a conference room, meeting room there that is shown. And there will be a dividing wall that will be pulled out in there to separate those two. Those are just some various pictures. There's going to be, if you'll notice right there where, where the wood is in the, the left picture, those are going to be bookshelves that will be in that meeting room. And that was just something to help enclose that door that was originally there. And that's then drilling through the concrete, which is very loud in the building. I think all of the, the staff will attest to that. Jennifer actually recorded it earlier today. Yeah, so these are just some various pictures. This is downstairs in the basement, the side of the elevator where the new restroom will be and the storage area. Yes, they, they can hold it there, that's for the H back, for the dump mark that'll be ran downstairs.
No, that's in the basement.
Yeah, that, these are both in the basement. One room's inside the L P A. Yes, okay, so as you can see, we are making progress. If any of you get a chance to stop by, do that and you can certainly see it in person. But we are, we are glad they are moving on. We had a, a meeting today with the contractors and the engineers and they are saying that, you know, we're still on schedule. But they are looking at a full completion by February seventeenth. So we'll certainly try to hold them to that so that we can get everybody back where they need to be. Yes, sir. The last item I have is based upon the fact that on the twentieth, at that meeting, I will not be here in person. As I had indicated before, I'm a part of Pella, the Public Executive Leadership Academy at U N C. And they are holding our in-person meetings that week. Those run from various times throughout the day. I will certainly try to be present via Zoom personally so that I can be a part of the meeting or if not, just wanted to let the board know that I will not be here in person. That is all that I have for today.
Will, do you have anything you'd like to share? What about anyone on the board?
So Cecil Wilson contacted me last week and shared with me that the census information is out. And I'm not quite sure how. But evidently, according to the census, our population has dropped in the last ten years by a hundred and eighty-five people.
In Silas City?
Yes. That was my reaction, thank you. Because this affects our funding.
Oh, my God.
And so I don't know if there's ways to challenge that, but I think we should look into it. I don't think that's accurate portrayal of our town. Another issue with census is that evidently it, it doesn't break down. It just gives you the net. It doesn't say what it is per district. So it's conceivable that one district could increase, the district next to it's a decrease. But we don't know. And if you don't know, then how do you appropriately designate your voting districts? So those are two issues that are, could come up with the, with the, with the data. Don't know how to challenge it. I really feel that our town's population has increased in the past ten years.
Especially with Mount Air coming back.
Yes, I just don't think that's accurate and I know it's going to definitely adversely affect the funding.
It has to be that people did not submit, respond. I mean, we, that, that has to be the issue there. And what we're going to do, they can't do anything.
Well, but you know, there's other evidence that we could bring to bear. New construction permits, building permits, you know, I don't know what they accept, but yeah, there may be some ways to challenge it.
Well, another point that I've got, I've looked in some of this information too. If you think back ten years ago, where, what, what we were facing ten years ago, towns had closed and a lot of people left. It just about turned into a ghost town. You'd be taking, you'd be looking at that by the number of houses for sale signs that were on properties all over town and they would just be there and there was no activity on it. So I, I think, and I agree, we ought to look into it a little bit too. Some of it, I think, is we were up there, we've gone down here, we've just now got back at the sort of where we all were, I think. That's, that's a little bit of it, not all of it, but that has a part to play in that calculation.
Anyway, I thought I'd just let you guys know it's, it's coming down the pike. Don't know if there's a way to challenge it, but I know our funding is based on it.
And I, I would like to add to that. I think the initial numbers that were presented may not be broken down, but the demographer and certainly our attorney out of Raleigh will have these as they, they must be a part of the, you know, reallocation per district. So they, in some form, I'm sure they'll be receiving this information.
And they, 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 they get like the master data and, and we have talked to them about them and given them projections on, on growth in different areas. And they'll factor in those things too. And they'll bring all of that on October the first.
Is there any way to contest the total overall figure that we're allegedly ran by Dale?
Yes, there, um, there is a process and I believe it was part of an acknowledgement email that, that we received where we were supposed to state whether or not, we have not done that at this point. And I, I could pull it up here. Jack, you had it, you sent it to me, didn't you? At some point, it was on there.
Yeah, we got an email from Census and it's regarding challenges. It says, it's called the C Q R, which is account question resolution. That is a free process and it runs from January twenty-two to June of twenty-three.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
You know, we can start building our information now. This is what it says, allows local governments to challenge their census counts based on limited issues. And there's three bullet points. Boundary, the census used incorrect boundaries for an area. Geo-coded, housing units or group quarters were counted in the wrong place, inside or outside of city limits. And then last, coverage, housing units or group quarters were not counted at all. So that's, that's where we would make our pleas in those three categories in this program. It goes a little further and it starts talking about beyond that, it gets a little expensive to, to have the count done.
But I will say that the redistricting or the potential for redistricting that you guys have talked about, that the attorney will be presenting on October fourth and the demographer, that has to be approved for the election before that process could happen.
If there's a, if there's a free way to potentially get a more accurate count, I don't see how to go any lower. I guess it could, but we'll see going up.
Yeah, and Tina and I have talked about that because there's a, you know, small portion of the power wheel funding that is affected by that as, as well as, you know, based upon the sales and use tax.
It's just frustrating because we're all in a tier three district and then this is like a kick in the teeth. So it's just very frustrating.
We'll certainly look into that further and get you some more information before the next bulletin.
I have an aesthetic issue. The sign on Martin Luther King that says where E S Ramsey Jam is, it is not there anymore. And it has, the posts have weeds growing all over it and everything. And I just wanted to find out is that one to be replaced? I had one of the family members contact me and ask me about that, if the sign was going to put that up. The one that's, as you're going down, is going to be on the right side, up above where the film like you're going towards sixty-four down Martin Luther King. So it's over to your right and the sign is supposed to be pointing to the direction it's going to E S Ramsey Jam. It's, it's been down for a, a long time.
Probably can't see it because.
Yeah, it used, it used to be there and then the sign is gone, but it's just got weeds all over the, the posts.
Oh, well, is that the town going to keep that clean up a little, a little? Because I know every year, that, that grows up all the time. It always grows up, whole way the signs. I know, think about a couple of years where I sit and look back now, time over and over.
Yes, we'll, we'll look into it.
I got one question I want to ask. I got one question I wanted to ask. Now, these guys going around on the weekend, cutting down all these lamps and stuff, going inside the roof like on Third Street and Fourth Street, what is the town going to do about that?
You're talking about the ones over there where they have removed some?
No, I'm talking about over on Third. Right. We've got people on Third Street, and the nearest one over on Fourth Street, but I know they spent, they spent all, they gone one, uh, other side, and they got that, that pile of debris looking like. I don't know, what is, what is the town going to do about it? Is it gonna make them move this stuff off?
We have been in contact with the property owners, and they have cleared up some of the debris from whatever, trees cut, you know, what, I don't know what all was mixed in there. But they went over there, our staff went over there and looked at it, and we made contact with them, and they started cutting some of it and pulling it. In fact, they pulled it to the back street at first, and then they, they came in, did one little corner on the side, and Chris and I talked about this today, and I asked him to make contact again and let them know we had given them two weeks, and at that point, we were going to turn it over to code enforcement. And we've reached the, the two-week mark from the time.
One on Fourth Street, is that right?
Third.
He's talking about the wrong. The one on Fourth, we haven't made contact with it today. It's gotta be trimmed up so that we can get to it. The way it is now, we can't pick it up with that truck, but we have.
And that's the problem on Third as well, it's too long. And when they went to grab it, it was falling out and, you know, they couldn't place it in the truck.
The one on Third, we're not saying that we're supposed to pick it up anyway because it's a vacant lot, but we, we, we did agree to pick it up because it is such an asshole, but he asked us to trim it up so that we can get it. We tried to pick it up, and our room truck wanted to pick it up, it just kind of mounted up.
That's the same property owner that was down the street.
Oh, yeah.
Where you live. It, it's, it's the same property.
Why don't they have a mess down on Fourth Street back there? They look good, they clean, cleaned around that house, but it didn't broke up around that house. You didn't see the house. They went down on Saturday, started about eight o'clock, and they take it all set up.
Anyone else? I have a question, Mike. Is the festival still on for Saturday?
No.
No, no. The, the festival was canceled. No, it, it's a health fair, and it's only going to be a small portion of the street that the town street that would be closed, the side of the Chatter Rad, and it would be more of a vaccination.
The nine eleven memorial thing retired, we got to cancel it, we'll not be doing anything for the memorial right now.